This meeting is now called to order Monday, December 12th, 2022. Councilwoman Seaver, please lead us. The bikes, Louie. You may be seated. Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Statement of public notice, please.
Sure. Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10:4-8 and NJSA 10:4-10 as follows. The notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on March 11th, 2022. Copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the Office of the Township Clerk on said day. A link and a telephone number to join the meeting virtually can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hablitz?
Present.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Present.
Councilmember Seaver?
Present.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Present.
Council President Scova?
Present. If there's no objections, we'll take both meeting, the minutes of both meetings of November 21st and December 5th. Have a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Kwadi, second by Councilmember Hablitz. All those, Mrs. Kraus is a roll call. I'm sorry. Call the roll.
Councilmember Hablitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scova?
Yes. Mayor Damiano, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before we begin this evening, I would, first, I'm going to start with a little bit of, a little boring information for everybody here in the township. That first bit of information is that the Passaic County is going to begin a, in layman's terms, styrofoam pickup at our DPW yard moving forward. A pily styrene pickup. Anyone that has styrofoam material, it can be brought to our DPW yard here in Little Falls. It will be recycled down there. More information will be coming up in the near future for anyone that would like that. We will have more information coming out. But there will be a recycling location for that in the near future at our DPW yard. Now, with that said, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Seaver to join me here in the floor for a reading of a proclamation recognizing her for five years of service here in Little Falls. And it reads, whereas Councilwoman Tanya Seaver is deserving of appreciation and considerable thanks for her distinguished work as a member of the Little Falls Township Council since 2018. And whereas Councilwoman Seaver has been fulfilling the role of public servant for five years and has represented the township of Little Falls in many capacities and with the fidelity that the oath of office requires and much more. And whereas so much of the work of the Township Council takes place in the committees of council and Councilwoman Seaver has served on many of those committees with commitment. And whereas Councilwoman Seaver has proudly served as a member of the Municipal Alliance Committee for five years, the Finance Committee for five years, the Local Emergency Management Planning Council for three years, the Library Board for two years, and the Open Space and Grant Committee for one year. And whereas Councilwoman Seaver has also been instrumental in bringing new traditions to Little Falls, including the Little Falls Farmers Market, the Run Little Falls 5K, Light Up Little Falls, and Pickleball. And whereas, as Little Falls experiences growth and change while working to maintain its unique identity, we appreciate Councilwoman Seaver's contributions even more. And now therefore, I, James Belford Damiano, mayor of the Township of Little Falls, on behalf of the Township Council, do hereby recognize and thank Councilwoman Seaver for her service and dedication to the community. Congratulations. And now I'm going to ask. And now I'm going to ask Councilman Kwadi to join me. And it reads, whereas Councilman Albert Kwadi is deserving of appreciation and considerable thanks for his distinguished work as a member of the Little Falls Township Council since 2019. And whereas Councilman Kwadi has been fulfilling the role of public servant for four years and has represented the township of Little Falls in many capacities and with fidelity that the oath of office requires and much more. And whereas so much of the work of the Township Council takes place in the committees of council and Councilman Kwadi has served on many of those committees with commitment. And whereas Councilman Kwadi proudly served as member of the Little Falls Planning Board for one year prior to his tenure as councilman. And whereas Councilman Kwadi has also served as the Chair of the Domestic Violence Prevention Committee for four years, a member of the Local Emergency Management Planning Council for two years, the Regional Flood Board for one year, also serving as the Council School Liaison for two years. And whereas Councilman Kwadi has been instrumental. Including outdoor movie nights, the Green Fair, and Water Fun Fest. And whereas Councilman Kwadi worked closely with myself on the township's response to Hurricane Ida in 2021, and he also assisted in having a Pixelot camera installed at the recreation center, allowing parents to watch their children participate in sports during the pandemic. And whereas, as Little Falls experiences growth and change while working to maintain its unique identity, we appreciate Councilman Kwadi's contributions even more. And now therefore, I, James Belford Damiano, mayor of the Township of Little Falls, on behalf of the Township Council, do hereby recognize and thank Councilman Kwadi for his service and dedication to the community. Thank you, Mayor. I have a few words that I'd like to say on a personal note about both Councilwoman Seaver and Councilman Kwadi. Because these are two individuals who have been extremely dedicated to the township of Little Falls. And these two individuals are people who put their money where their mouth is. And when I say that, what I mean by that is there's a lot of people who have a lot of great ideas. And so often we hear, well, wouldn't this be a great idea? And that's where that idea dies. Councilwoman Seaver and Councilman Kwadi have not only come up with great ideas and proposed great ideas, but they brought those great ideas to fruition here in Little Falls, to the benefit of every single resident here in town. The farmers market has had thousands of people walk through it over the past handful of years. Water Fun Fest has had kids running and screaming across the recreation center with adults acting like children, shooting water guns at one another, bringing adults back to their pre-teen years. And it's these ideas that are actually brought to fruition that make me love Little Falls. And it's these council people and the ideas that they have being brought to fruition that have made them such incredible council people. And I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart for everything that they have done for this township and for the residents of this township. And I will have certainly a lot more to say to them, not here in public, while they're on the dais and in thanking them for everything that they have done. So I will leave it at that because I know there are a lot of other people that certainly have a number of words to say about them. But thank you for everything that the two of you have done over your years here as council members. I sincerely thank the two of you for everything that you have done from the bottom of my heart. With that said, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays. I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Please stay safe out there. And again, very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to council reports. Councilmember Hablitz?
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to start with my library report before I say my words about my two council members because I might just get choked up. So I just want to say the council report first. I'd like to thank the library for another wonderful year of programming. Jennifer and her staff have done a great job at bringing lots of new things to the library, and I look forward to seeing what they have in store for next year. That being said, there's still a few things that are left on the agenda for the December month. They still have the New York Speaker Series, which continues with New York during the revolution. That will be on December 15th at 7:00 PM. They also have a holiday craft Wednesday, December 21st from 6:00 to 8:00. No registration is required, and it is for all ages. And with the holiday season, there is a great display of cookbooks on display. So check one out for your holiday cooking. The Friends of the Library is still having a membership drive, and they will resume meetings in January. As you can see the website for dates. Also, the Friends are still selling their Little Falls ornaments. You can pick them up to the library, and they are $15 each. They are really cute little State of New Jersey shaped ornaments that say Little Falls down them. There's still some left. They're in different colors. Really great gift. They're just great for your trip. That's all I have for the library. Where do I start? To Councilman Kwadi. I said to him in the beginning that I probably wouldn't have known him except for getting to know him in politics because we have children of different ages. We didn't run in the same, you know, social circle here in town. But I met Councilman Kwadi, and I cannot tell you more to know a more genuine man than him. He is genuinely a great person. He does put his money where his mouth is, just like James, just like the mayor said. And he is just a pleasure to work with as a colleague and to have as a friend. I can't say enough about the things that we've done together, programming for movie night and the Green Fair and all of those things that Al just thought about, and we worked together and brought them here to town, brought them to fruition. He really will be missed, but I'm glad that through this time I made a really good friend. Thank you. To Councilwoman Seaver. Friends from the beginning, friends that brought me into this political realm of, hey, I think you'd be good at this, you know, why don't you try it out? And it's just been a great time for the last two and a half years that we, or two years that we've gotten to work together on council. I can't think of a better person that I would have wanted to work with, spending every Sunday for, I don't know, 22 weeks at the farmer's market. Just, you know, bringing it to fruition, the 5K run, everything that we've done, the townwide garage sale, all of those things bringing to the community. I could not have a better person to have done it with, and you also will be missed. Thank you.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Thanks, Council President. I'll do the non-emotional stuff first. Just this Saturday, from 12:00 to 3:00 at the Civic Center, the Girl Scouts are holding their first ever Holiday Craft Fair. So I got a message today to make sure, remind everyone to come out, support the Girl Scouts. And then, of course, before I get into my words for Councilman Kwadi and Councilwoman Seaver, I just want to say happy holidays, everyone. Stay safe, and we'll see you next year. So I'm going to start with the gentleman on my left, the shark dressed man tonight, as you can see. You know, what can you say about Councilman Kwadi that you don't already know? The one thing I could say is the king of Oxford, that's what I don't know. But the one thing I'll say about him is he loves what he, he's been able to do the last four years on the council. He loves this town, and he really does care about the residents all ages. It's not just folks that are our age. He cares about the kids and, of course, the grandparents as well. I can say, you know, from a standpoint of the impact that he had, just look in this room right now with the family and friends and members from his committee as well with the Domestic Violence Committee that's here. So I know, Al, you've been tremendous as a vital resource in that committee, just doing what you can for the residents and helping everyone. And other thing too to say is with the Little Falls Business Association, the work that you've done behind the scenes, offering your time, whether it's filming something, emceeing a pieing contest between the mayor and chief post and others, you know, just always being out there. And then, you know, as the mayor alluded to and Councilwoman Hablitz said as well, just with the ideas that you brought to the table. You know, you brought movie night. You had Raiders of the Lost Ark, of course. I know you probably would have wanted Godfather One, maybe Uncut Three, Goodfellas if you were able to do that, but understanding we couldn't do that. But also the water event you did this summer, you know, it was a great event, and I was one of those big adults acting like a kid, shooting my kids with a water gun. The Halloween events that you did as well, just the work there, just having everyone as a meeting platform, making it fun for a change. The Green Fair, raising awareness, and then just the support that you also did for the library, because we've seen the transformation last couple of years. I know you've been involved in that behind the scenes as well with some others. The one thing I will say is that the last four years, you did leave your mark on this council, and you are going to be missed. I, of course, you know, wish you well on the next journey. I know you have some great things going with CASA and Passaic County, and I know you're going to rock that and just do some great things for them. And just, you know, last thing I want to say to you is you and I always had something in common. We're both sons of politicians, and I know your dad's looking at you right now, and he's very proud of you. So I want to wish you all the best, you know that.
Thank you. I hope he's looking down.
No, that's correct. Yeah, he's looking down. Sorry, buddy. He's happy for you. Yes. So to Councilwoman Seaver, you know, as I talked about, Councilman Kwadi, what don't you know about him? You know, Councilwoman Seaver, you know, you did something as well as I did that no one in this room can say, you know, for two years in a row, we had a run to keep this seat. You know, we both inherited a seat from two former council members and just the work that we put in just to get there. But, you know, the one thing I will say about you is you came in here right off the bat, and you wanted to change things. You knew there was a lot of things that were missing and that we can be doing more, and you wanted to make sure that Little Falls was a booming town and we had a variety of offerings to all of the residents. The farmer's market, my goodness, I mean, you see it. And the greatest compliment that you can get is the two neighboring towns copied off of your idea and tried to do the same thing. One no longer does it, but you know, it just shows that, you know, there's a lot of work into it, and that's the ultimate credit to you for doing that. Pickleball, I still remember the mayor saying, what is pickleball? You know, having conversation. Now, it's one of the most popular sports in the world, and, you know, it's, if you go down to the courts on a daily basis, it's crowded. And I was talking to Tyler today from the rec department. He had 35 people show up to play indoor pickleball. So you've left an impact on that sport where everyone wants to come to Little Falls and play. The 5K, you know, you came up with this idea of Run Little Falls, and it's continued to grow each and every year where, you know, we have a lot of different participants of all ages. Now, I watched 12, 13-year-olds run the race with their parents and their grandparents, and you made that happen. So that is something that, you know, will sorely be missed because the one thing I'll say about you is you created so much that it's going to continue. But every time we see it, we're going to know who made this happen. To the work you did on the committees, I have to give you credit for the Finance Committee. You were a pit bull. You looked into everything. You asked all the right questions. You found money for programs, and that says a lot because you were dedicated to this. You know, you took that experience from Whole Foods and brought it here to make sure that those numbers were right. It's just been a pleasure working with you, and, you know, I just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for the five years that you've brought to this council. I wish you well. I know you're still going to be around. You know, maybe Councilwoman Hablitz will get you to run the 5K this year. You know, that's the goal coming up in '23. But just again, thank you so much and appreciate everything.
Chief Pearl, do you have anything this evening for this governing body? Events like this offer the profound opportunity to recognize the accomplishments of Councilman Albert Kwadi and Councilwoman Tanya Seaver, who stepped up and exercised their civic duty to their community. But today, about, today, this is far more than inwardly accomplishments. Today, we celebrate selfishness and the offering of time and talent in service to the needs of the Little Falls community. So while we recognize our own list of accomplishments, as well we should, more importantly, we recognize the depth and the breadth of the true human spirit, always seeking to stretch beyond self-reaving, a legacy of service that will hopefully reach others in the community with the desire to do the same and continue the wonderful spirit of selfishness that has made these accomplishments a true testament to the greatness of the wonderful community of Little Falls. Council Wenzel?
Thank you, Council President. Norm, I have nothing to say at this point, but I'm, I just want to say to Tanya now that I've seen a lot of politicians, but you don't see a lot of public servants. And Tanya now are public servants. You have to be politicians to get on the dais, but once you're on the dais, you have to be a public servant. And for those of us who work with you, it's a pleasure to work with people who understand that. And so I will, I certainly appreciated the opportunity to be up here with you, have Tanya on my right, and she, you know, she would kick me from time to time, but that's okay. But, and it was a pleasure to be as far away from Alex as possible. But tonight, I'm wearing a tie. Long story short, this is, this is Al's dad's tie. And Al and I grew up in the same church. And his dad, for those of you who didn't know him, he was the living embodiment of a public servant. Whether he was in office, out of office, seeking office, just lost election for office. It was all for him about his community, whether it was church community, his home, his family, the community of Wes Patterson. It's not Woodland Park. Community of Wes.
Was it?
But I, I wear it not only as a remembrance of, of him for tonight, I wore it for you, but also for Tanya. Because to me, it's a tie that I keep in my office to remind me of what a public servant is. And I know you're going to walk away from this being better people, more well-rounded people, and still members of this community. So I appreciate the time that I've had to spend with you, and I'm sure that the township has benefited from your service. Thank you.
Councilman Kraus, the floor is yours. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, all of you. Your words mean a lot to me. And you know, people used to ask me when I was a little bit into this role, when they say, how do you like? And I would say something, and it, it went true to me, and I don't think anybody ever believed that, that I was being honest when I said, the phone rings, somebody on the other line needs help, and you get to help them. And what could be better than that? And so that is what I learned from my father, and that is what I wanted to do in this role. And I, I look out in this room, and I see the Testas, and they live on Hobson Ave, and Hobson Ave needs help because Hobson Ave still floods. And I'm going to try and help you, even if I'm not in this role. And Tony called me one day and said, what are we going to do? They're allowed to, the kids are allowed to play in the gym, but the parents aren't allowed to be there. Are we going to, are we going to miss God knows how many seasons of our kids? And I said, you know what? If there's a solution out there, we'll figure it out. Let's go. And we, you know, we knew that Sage Valley had some, some solutions, and we went and we did it. We did it because the people up here were supportive of it, but because a resident called and said, we need help. Next to the Testas or the Castallos, they live in an area that is sort of blocked in by Hemlock Road. And when we were going to pave Hemlock Road, they were concerned about how that was going to impact their family and their kids. And we changed our plan because, because of the concern that they brought forward and the concerns that, that a lot of other residents brought forward. And we, we solved the problem of the one road in town that wasn't paved. And we, and we didn't cause another problem for a bunch of other residents. And I don't get credit for that. That was the mayor and Chuck who figured that out. But that's what this job is. It is, it is figuring out problems. And if it was easy, anybody could do it. And it's not easy. It's hard. You have to make difficult decisions. And I will say that I always swore to myself that the decisions and the opinions that I had were going to be what benefited the township and never myself and never my party. And four years later, I'm comfortable saying that that's the way I handled this role, and I couldn't be happier. When I, when I was sworn in, I said, it's like being elected is like taking out a loan, and now you have to pay it back for the next four years. And I did my best to pay it back, and I'm proud of that. I just want to say that to anybody who may come up here next year, five, four years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, if you're doing this right, you will see it as a blessing and a burden, and it should be both. And if it's not both, then something's wrong. It should always be a blessing, and it should always be a burden. And so with that in mind, none of us do these jobs alone. And so there's people that I just would like to acknowledge. And I'll start all the way at the end with Mr. Kucia, who, you know, the mayor talks about us having ideas and things like that, and I can have as many crazy ideas as anybody else. And Chuck Kucia is the person that I would sometimes bet them through to say, well, if he doesn't say it can happen, it's not going to happen. And he never says no to anything. You come up with a crazy idea, and he will say, yes, we will find a way to make it happen. So I don't know how much that says about you or how much that says that maybe my crazy ideas aren't as crazy as I think they are, but we always got it done. But you are one of the unsung heroes of this town. If there's a train that runs on time, it runs on time because of you. And thank you for, for all of your support and being a colleague all this time. And your staff, particularly Cynthia and Melissa. Again, this town does not run as well as it does without the two of you either. And thank you for everything that you did to help me to move forward with my visions for things that I would like to see done because it could not be done without you. To Counselor Wenzel, thank you for your words. Thank you so much for wearing that tie tonight. And, and thank you for letting us know where the boundaries are and what, what we can do and what we can't do and what is, because a professional needs to get involved sometimes because when you allow laypeople to run the government like we do here in America, somebody needs to know the rules. And so I appreciate all of your guidance and advice through the years. There are a lot of other town hall employees. I want to extend my thanks to all of them, as well as the DPW, Ronnie Campbell and Ron Stell. I mean, by God, it, there are two people who, who do get some attention and well-deserved. It is the two Ronnies. The work that they do in making all of us look good all the time. And those events that we talk about don't happen without their support. Whether it's getting town hall ready for domestic violence vigil or setting up chairs for the Little Falls Business Association. They do so much, and they deserve so much of our thanks. Chief, it's been a pleasure working with you. As soon as you became the deputy chief, you came to our Domestic Violence Prevention Committee meetings. You gave us your guidance and support. You referred us to Joe V. Imperial, who's, who works on domestic violence for the department. He was an asset to us, and, and your role is about to change for the better, and I congratulate you for that and look forward to your continued leadership. But, but thank you for all that you've done. I also, in the police department, want to mention John Vanik, our community policing officer, who is at everything that we have been listing tonight. And what a great job he does. And Dawn Gilchrist, for all that she has taken on outside of the roles that she normally needs to do. Mr. Pace, if you're on, and Tyler Pasero, I believe I see you. Again, two people that without you, none of the stuff we listed happened. So thank you. Thank you for everything. Thank you for being great collaborators and for executing our visions on things. It's really appreciated. Tracy Marinelli is here. If you're ever going to have somebody throw a party for you, try and book her because the things that we did for graduations and for Steve Post's retirement, I was thrilled to be along for the ride, literally, and help out any way I could. I couldn't be more happy with the fact that my son is under an organization in a school district that you lead. It's been terrific. And vote yes tomorrow, everyone, please. To the members of Domestic Violence Prevention Committee. When I, I got here, I knew nothing about this issue, and you educated me and you inspired me. You continue to do so. And so keep up the good work. You will do fine without me, and I appreciate everything that you have done. You will do fine without me and I appreciate everything that you have done for the last four years. I'm getting there. I'll start with my other work life, they say. Councilwoman Havletts, we, we started working together before you were on the council and you, you just, your heart and your dedication to this township, you know, everybody except for Tanya and the mayor, we all adopted Little Falls, right? I wasn't born here, most of us weren't born here. You want to adopt me anytime, you can adopt me because you have taken this town and brought it into your heart and done so much for so many people. And I don't know that anybody realizes just how much work you put in, but we do. And I, I do especially. And so I appreciate that. Councilman Van Cherry, if, if you want to find somebody, a walking directory of the people of Little Falls, he's sitting to my right. And your dedication and leadership to the, to the town, what you've done with the Memorial Day Parade and the concert is just remarkable. And so it's been a pleasure to, to know you. I'm not going anywhere. God, it's like being at your own funeral and I apologize for that feeling. But it's, but it's, it's been a, quite a pleasure to be sitting next to you. Anthony Scobas' leadership is second only to the mayor's in the role that he has. But the voice that he has with this group and the leadership, I appreciate you. I've learned so much from you about public service and about local government, things that, that I, that I didn't even know, I didn't know. And thank you for that. And thank you for, for being a mentor that you've been. I'll go to Councilwoman Seaver next. Like everybody else, I am in awe of her ability to find something that nobody's ever heard of, pickleball, and bring it into a town. But it's not just that. It's, oh, let's, let's make decorating your house with lights a thing that the township can embrace. And let's make, you know, let's have our own 5K. Why do we have to let our people go to somebody else's 5K? And oh, who didn't realize, who realized that we didn't, that we needed a farmer's market? Well, Councilwoman Seaver realized that we needed a farmer's market, that's for sure. And, and what a success it's been. And so I realized your impact. If I, if I wasn't assured of it before, driving down the road the other night, it was about 25 degrees out. It had to be 9:30 at night and people were playing pickleball. And I said, oh my God. So the footprint that you've left on this town is, is significant. I won't say enormous because that would imply that you have big feet, but but certainly, certainly one that will, that will not fade soon. And the mayor, you're like a big brother and a little brother at the same time. I don't know that I could ever say that about anybody else, but when I got here and four years ago, I talked about your vision for the township and my commitment to it. And it holds true that you're, you, you obviously are somebody who also puts his money where his mouth is and you've done so much for people here, not just on the grand level, but on the personal level. And it is, has been my pleasure to work side by side with you on so many things. And we've talked about going forward, me working in a capacity on some other things as a volunteer. And I will be happily doing that. And we'll talk more about that after this meeting. But, but thank you. Thank you for your leadership for this town. Thank you for the leadership of this council. And, and thank you for your friendship. We, I was with the mayor when when my father went to the hospital. It was a tough day and and we got through it. And if he is looking down on us, he's grateful to you for that as well. I want to mention Kevin Barry, who without him, none of us would be in these seats. And his contribution has been incredible. My sister Patty is here. We've talked about my dad a lot and you know, for up until my dad passed away last year, my sister did so much to take care of him and, and it just relieved so much of the pressure from me when I, when I needed to honor my commitment to the people of Little Falls. And I could not have done that without you. And so thank you. Cause you, you gave the people a gift as well. And I appreciate you so much. And obviously my wife and who sometimes allows me to take credit for things that you're doing at the library, it seems. But you are the rock, you are the shoulders that I get to stand on. People love to mention how I married up and I, and I know that every day of my life. And I, I thank you and I appreciate you and I love you so much. And and I know you know it's, it's not just going to end because I'm still going to have volunteer things to do and all of that. And I just, when people say I couldn't have done it without you, it is so true in this case and so literal. And, and thank you. Thank you for giving me the gift of being able to help people when I, when I could. I appreciate you and love you so much. And to my son, Michael, his commitment has, has been equal. And to all of our families, by the way, we owe a debt of gratitude because they pay the price and they don't get to sit up here and wax for five minutes about or longer about, about what they, what they see fit for the township. They, they just have to be supportive and they do it. And and I personally appreciate all of your families for that. But Michael, I just, I want you to know that while I sat up here, I just wanted to be a good example for you, like my dad was for me. And I hope that I have been. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Tanya Seaver, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I don't have anything actually prepared. Which means it'll be super short now, but you know, I'm so glad that the mayor did not actually start with the story that is probably our most infamous story together of when, and I know he knows what I'm going to say, but when we first got introduced to the group together and was looking to run with Chris that first time. And if anybody knows me, I'm in my corporate world 24/7. That's me. That's, you know, what, what defines me and my life and brings me accolades and my happiness. And so I don't, I don't know about this. And James says, it's okay. It's just two meetings a month. I would like to tell everybody, it is not two meetings a month. So I appreciate you telling me that it was only two meetings a month because I might've given it some additional thought otherwise. But it is, it is a, a passion and a love to bring dedication and services to the community with little to no cost, most importantly, as a taxpayer. Growing up here in Little Falls, you know, it was really disheartening to see our town have no services, our town continued to degrade, our roadways falling apart. And, and I thought, wow, maybe I can make a difference. Maybe I can take some of my knowledge that I have, whether it's in finance or services or programs that I've built corporately, can I bring them here to the town? And, and I hopefully, you know, was able to accomplish that. And I'm so forever help, help, happy and thankful for that. Not many people get to sit up here and say, I've worked with my bestie for years. You know, and that's amazing. She was my bestie before. She's my bestie now. She's going to be my bestie later. So, you know, you're ride and die. She says, we sat at the farmer's market every Sunday. We sat at my house every Saturday night first, working out the map and everything else like that. So, you know, again, it's, it's a labor of love. And when you do something that you love, it's not really work. Al, you know, you've been such a sounding board and a great friend. And again, I always appreciated you bringing your knowledge. I think each one of us brought different types of knowledge to, to this town. And things that Al brought, I was like, I don't know anything about cameras in the rec center. That is beyond, that is beyond my ability and my knowledge. So you've taught me so much and I'm forever grateful for that. And then Chris, I mean, it was, it was great. We're running two years in a row. We spent a lot of time together, that's for sure. And a lot of great time together. So I appreciate that. And one thing that I really appreciate about you, Chris, too, is you're just always so even keeled. You know, you know, I am not. So I appreciate that and I appreciate that balance that you bring to the group also, especially if, you know, we all have our opinions. You're kind of always the even keeled guy. And then Anthony, you've always just really explained the way of politics, you know, areas that I'm not familiar with and explains what can and can't be done. And I, not a person who takes no very easily and like to continue to push the envelope. And so I appreciate your tutelage in that fashion. And Counselor Wenzel, you know, luckily we haven't had to deal too much together. So I appreciate that too. And then Chuck, Mr. Kucha, of course, you know that I am definitely not the person to ever say no and kind of want to just, you know, appreciate your guidance and all of that. And I know you're probably looking on to the next phase of your life in a few years and wish you the best in that case also. So, and then of course, there are so many other areas and problem with thanking people is you never want to forget anybody. But really working with Ronnie and Ron at the DPW for these years, I mean, just stellar, stellar people who just have commitment and heart and just want to do right. And when you meet people like that, they make you a better person. So I really appreciate them. And then of course, Mr. Pace and, and Tyler Passaro from our Recreation Department. Most of my crazy ideas have gone through the rec department. So without them, none of this could be possible. Tyler has been instrumental and has accepted my text messages at all different times. Appreciate that because I'm never really sure when he's working because he is always working. So really always appreciate that. And it's been great to see him grow in his role at the rec center. And Mr. John Pace, even though he texted me today and says, it's John. I'm like, you're still Mr. Pace and you always will be. So but again, thank you to all the staff here. Truly, truly excited to actually continue on in different capacities in the town. I, I feel like I'm actually a, Al mentioned a funeral. I, I feel like I'm at a party. And I'm excited to take the pieces that I really truly loved and continue on with those. So I feel like I'm actually the winner up here. And I love it. I love Little Falls and I love to continue to bring things to the town and hopefully continue to do so. So, thank you.
Before we continue, just a quick, quick mention, this Wednesday from 12 to 2:30, there's a senior holiday luncheon at the Civic Center. Again, that's from 12 to 2:30 this Wednesday. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items. I'm sorry. So moved by Councilman Kwadi, second by Councilman Van Cherry. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
For those opposed, please do so by saying nay. The motion carries. Mrs. Kraus.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment and the council president will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
The floor is now open. Those who want to come up, you do not have to state your address, just your name. This is for agenda items. Mr. Kusia. Seeing no one come forth, have a motion to close to the public.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Havletts, second by Councilmember Seaver. All those in favor of opposing the public, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed that motion, please do so by saying nay. That motion carries. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Councilmember Van Cherry, second by Councilmember Seaver. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Yes.
Council President Scobas?
Yes. Have a motion to approve Resolution A. Moved by Councilmember Havletts.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Van Cherry. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll for Resolution A.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Yes.
Council President Scobas?
Yes. Have a motion to open the meeting for general matters.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Kwadi. Second by Councilmember Havletts. All those in favor of opening the public, the meeting to the public for general matters, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment and the council president will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
The floor is now open. You're welcome to come up. I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Kusia, that's okay. We're going to, we're going to take the audience members first here. You're welcome to come up.
I'm, it's three minutes. But it is repetitive. So I apologize in advance, but I still feel it's worthy of, of saying it out loud.
I'm sorry. Please state your name.
Yes, Ann Kwadi.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank you, Councilman Kwadi, for your service and dedication to the Little Falls community for the last four years. I've had the honor and privilege of having a front row seat and watching you grow and become someone who cares deeply about giving back and serving to the community. During your time as a councilman, you were able to leverage your many talents and skills as producer, journalist and photographer to build a better community. And in doing so, you've created long-lasting and positive impacts for the residents and businesses in town. Whether it was your empathy or compassion, or your openness to learn, or your ability to inject humor and fun, you have incredible ability to bring people together and to solve real problems. From day one, you got right to work, conceiving, conceiving of and working with others to create and implement community events such as Family Fun Water, the Family Water Fun Fest, movie nights, the Green Fair, Halloween in the Park and the watch party for the spring break championship event. All of these events were attended by hundreds of residents. You have also met with local business owners to better understand and address their needs and challenges. You helped them promote their businesses and you volunteered your time to emcee the annual block party. You were also boots on the ground when the flooding happened. You helped residents in the Jackson Park, Jackson Park section of town to recover from the devastating loss. You also spoke with the residents on Hotsnap. You assisted in helping setting up and distributing cleaning supplies for those that were impacted. You had conversations with officials at both the county and national level to try to mitigate future flooding issues and continue to do so to this day. During the pandemic, you checked on senior citizens to make sure they had everything they needed and made sure they were doing okay. And when the indoor gatherings were limited to certain numbers of people, you made it possible for family and friends to be able to watch their children play indoor sports on pixel art. In addition, you built opportunities to bring awareness to the Little Falls Domestic Violence Prevention Committee and to promote the great work that they do. And you also fostered a strong partnership with the Little Falls School District as a liaison to schools. But what really sticks out to me is your integrity. You never once ravered from what you thought was right. Through it all, you, you were honest and kept your promises. You did what you said you were going to do. You are a fantastic role model for our son. What more could I ask for? For you, it was about helping other people and building a better community. Well, I think you've accomplished that. And then so during the last four years, you've connected with a lot of people and have positively impacted their lives. And just look around the room. You've challenged them to learn and grow and to understand how local government works and explained why you made the decisions you did. You encouraged residents to get involved. You asked for input and you helped solve their problems in a timely manner. And as a result of all your hard work and dedication and that of the
And as a result of all your hard work and dedication and that of the current administration, we now have a thriving community. Little Falls is a place where people of all backgrounds and generations belong. A place where all residents can live a happy, healthy, and fulfilling life. And for that, I thank you and your administration. I know mom and dad are looking down and are beaming full of pride. I love you.
I love you.
The floor is open. Mr. Kusia?
Mr. Pasero.
Mr. Pasero, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Tyler Pasero, 24 Hamilton Court, and with me, current Director of Recreation for towns of Little Falls. I see John on here. John is feeling under the weather. So I can speak on behalf of us and on behalf of the Recreation Department, we would just like to give a big thank you to Councilwoman Seaver and Councilman Kwadi for the tremendous amount of support that they showed toward the Recreation Department over the years. It's been a pleasure working alongside you and helping turn some of your small, but as you know, not so small ideas into big and successful events here in the township. So again, thank you. And we wish you nothing but the best in your future endeavors.
Is there anyone else who'd like to?
Tracy Marinelli, I'll use 32 Stevens Avenue. That's where I live most of my days. I just wanted to say a big thank you to Councilwoman Seaver and especially Councilwoman Kwadi for their time. The mayor has often been say, heard saying that what makes our relationship so wonderful is that I ask you all to show up and you just ask when to come. There's boundaries, but such love and support of each other. The mayor and council has never tried to run the school and the school has never tried to to run the council. And for that, I'm as the superintendent, so appreciative. But I I have to just say a special thank you to Mr. Kwadi. Some days without him, I would have been talking a latte to myself. So I could always count on him for for being at those events, whether they were during the day or or the evening. And if you build it, they will come. And we've 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 had some. So I'm holding you to the fact that you're still going to come, even though you're not holding this role and even after Michael graduates. As long as I'm holding them, you need to be present at them. And the crazy ideas that I've had, no matter what time of morning or night, when I call and say, can you be here tomorrow with a video camera or a convertible or both? You're there and the the children and staff of Little Falls are so grateful for for everything that you've done for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward? Have a motion to close to the public. Moved by Councilmember Vancherri, second by Councilmember Seaver. All those in favor of closing to the public, please say aye.
Aye.
For those opposed that motion, please say nay. Motion carries. At this time, have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Kwadi.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Seaver. All those in favor of adjourning this meeting, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries and this meeting is now closed.